Okay, welcome everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:35.
7:35, that's what I have too.
Okay, at 7:35 and I will seat regular members Karen Kopta, Bill Davies, Margaret Minor, and myself. And I should write this down, who got moved up last? Does anybody remember?
I don't remember.
Okay. Sue?
Yeah?
Sue? I'm gonna move you up.
Alright, I haven't been moved up in a while, so.
Okay. I would, okay, so the agenda consists of approving the minutes, four items of new business, including Doug's resignation, election of officers, meeting schedule, update from me, and any other business that may come up, and then we adjourn. So you all got Doug's resignation, and I would, with your approval, I would like to go and, I would like to send him a letter on behalf of the whole ZBA, thanking him for his participation and telling him how much we will miss his wisdom.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, me too.
It's good.
So, we will, it's, he was really valuable to us and we will miss him.
Yeah.
So, that creates a vacancy, and our tradition, or our practice, I guess I would say, is that we move up the next most senior member, and that would be Nancy. Where are you Nancy?
Oh.
And I've spoken to Nancy and she...
Where is everybody? I have, all I have is the agenda.
Look on the side.
We're on the side.
I don't have, I don't have, myself and Julie.
Oh, if you scroll to the top of that, looks like you're on the seat two people, right next to that, you can see more.
Do we need to see the agenda?
I had everybody, and then the agenda got pushed, put up, and then I lost everybody.
Yes, that happens when a, when a, when this document is shared. Julie, we're good on the agenda though.
I'll pull it down.
Thank you.
There we go.
So Nancy, you can speak for yourself. I spoke with Nancy about her willingness to take a role as a full member. Nancy?
I think I'm ready to take the leap after these years of practice.
Good.
Great.
So, the process is that we make a recommendation, I make a recommendation to the selectmen, and they make the, they do the appointment, and then I think you probably have to get sworn in again. But...
On Zoom?
Huh?
On Zoom?
Oh dear.
No, you can go in, and I think you can go into, Julie, she...
They may actually step out on the front porch for you, but yeah, the town, you're gonna see the town clerks.
Oh, okay.
That's what happened when I did it Julie, they had to step out, meet them outside, and then they did it outside.
I have to leave my home?
Sure they would do it on Zoom Nancy.
Oh, good.
So, the next item on the agenda is election of officers. So, I would entertain a motion to elect the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So I'll move that, that be the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, this is Margaret.
I would second.
Or third.
Discussion?
Do you want it?
I was just gonna say, I have one question. You had said at one point, you didn't think, you didn't know if you wanted to do it.
I will do it.
Oh, great. Then no discussion is needed.
Okay, other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I would call the question. Pardon?
You're doing a good job, keep it up Nanette.
Thanks Bill, I appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, I I appreciate the election. So the next issue would be Vice Chair, and Vice Chair is not a mandated position, and one of the reasons that we had moved Doug up to be Vice Chair was his role in meeting with applicants. So, I have, from Gail, a relevant opinion which I can send to you, because I told her what we were planning to do in terms of educating people on the hardship. And this is from Gail, Gail McTaggart, the Town Attorney. "The ZBA's authority is quasi-judicial in nature. For that reason, ZBA members should avoid having contact with applicants or neighbors outside of the hearing room, both before and after the decision is made." And then she goes on about what happens if a neighbor contacts. And then she talks about what happens if we do a site visit. So, if a neighbor contacts a ZBA member by phone or email, they should encourage that person to attend the meeting, or to put comments in writing so they can be shared with the entire ZBA. That's pretty much it. So, I think that makes it difficult for us to appoint anybody to do, any, a member or an alternate, to take on the role that we had been thinking about. And Gail had said this to me a couple of years ago, and when I was going back through my notes, I saw it, and I asked her about it again. So, separating out two issues, one is, somebody has to talk with the potential applicants about the hardship, the application of the hardship in particular. Gail, Gail said it could be the CEO, I think it also could be Julie, and my proposal would be that for now, that we ask Julie, since she talks to people anyway, when the applications, when they come and get the application, that Julie have that conversation.
That sounds like a good idea. Julie, are you good with that?
I'm good with that. Yep.
Had you been doing it before?
And I've done it on every application.
And wouldn't it be, or any question, then she could go to the CEO and discuss it later? You know, if there's a question on the application?
Well, I mean, I mean, if John, I've never had the impression from John that he, his, my impression from him always has been that once he says no, that he's...
He's not gonna change his mind.
He's, oh no, it's not that he's not gonna change his mind, that he's, that he doesn't see his role as working with the ZBA applicants. Julie, is that how you understand it?
I know if I have questions, John will answer them. So as far as, I mean, he will refer stuff to the ZBA, and if I need a clarification, he's always answered me, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so. But I'm comfortable talking to the applicant and explaining that they really need to stick to the hardship. And...
Are you, refresh my memory, are you permitted Julie to say to the applicant, when you see what they come back with, that that's not, sorry to tell you, but that's not gonna qualify as a hardship?
I've actually told them to take a look at the hardship, that some things would be hard to prove, and that a hard, and you, we have the part on the application, the whole definition, but sometimes they don't listen.
Right, well.
Yeah, we've had that.
So, we've experienced it.
Karen, I don't think she can specifically say that it, what they have is not, what they've explained is not a hardship, she can do what she just said, which is to refer them, you know.
I can tell them if something's not filled out properly, that they need to fill out more, you may wanna fill this out more, be more detailed here, take another look at the hardship, things like that. And I've been referring people to look at the old minutes online, also, because that way they can see.
Yeah. Julie, I agree, this is Margaret, and it comes up pretty often when people don't wanna give an interpretation of the law, but they'll say, what you just said, look at the minutes, or sometimes even look at the cases, you know, look at what we had here, like on the Board of Tax Review, they'll say, well, we can't give you, I was on it for a little while, we can't give you an opinion, but we can tell you, you know, to look at the properties and the decisions that might be relevant to you. So, I think that they can have a few things you can point them to, which they won't believe.
Yes, and then it'll also be a matter of listening to, so, yeah.
Great, well, that sounds good.
So, I will also talk to John and review with him this, because we had told him that he could refer people to Doug, so I will review with him this opinion from Gail, and tell him that at this point Julie is going to review the materials with the applicant, and she will bring questions to him if she has questions. Okay. We had a good system, unfortunately, we can't do it. So, so then there's the question of Vice Chair, and do we want to elect a Vice Chair? It was sort of a created position, and what's your thinking about a Vice Chair?
I don't think we need one.
Yeah, I'm not sure how pivotal or critical it is to have a Vice Chair.
I think it's a good idea if there's somebody that wants the role, only because they can step in for you Nanette, if you have something you want.
True.
Yeah, if there's somebody that can, and you know, I certainly, I've said before, I could not, with my work commitment, I don't have the time, but there's certainly, I'm looking at some people that are definitely qualified, but you'd have to wanna do it, and all I think it would mean is you, you shared with, you spent a lot, working well with Judy, and it was Judith, and it was, you know, it was a good relationship, you could cover for each other, and things, so. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, you know, especially you interact a lot, you know, with Julie and stuff, so just filling someone else in, if we have someone here that's interested, I think, you know, that would be good, you know, but.
Okay. What do other people think?
Well, I don't think we need one, but those are good points, and in the past, I think we created the position for Judith, or for you and Judith together.
We created it a year within, when Judith was having health problems and surgery.
Interesting.
And so, I backed her up, and then when I became Chair, she backed me up.
Do you feel Nanette that you would need or like a Vice Chair?
I would, I would take Bill's position, which is, I'm happy to have one if someone wants to do it. If, if nobody is interested, I think that, you know, I think we can manage, if I'm not gonna be in a meeting, I can just ask someone to chair, but Karen, as Bill, as Bill would say, I'm looking at you, because you're the most senior after Bill, so is it something you're interested in?
No, you, you and I have talked about it, you've, or you've casually, you know, asked me casually if I would be interested, and I'm not interested in it.
Okay.
Margaret?
Yeah, Margaret.
I'm not, I'm not real, I don't think I, I think I'm a little overextended, I don't think, I don't think I'd be good at it. Maybe there's someone who, who would be better, that might be almost anyone.
Okay, that would take us to...
Thank you for the suggestion.
That would take us to Nancy, who's just been, who's just been made a permanent member. Which is not a permanent member yet.
You know.
So you could do two things at once, become a permanent member and a Vice Chair, save time.
And work at my job 45 hours a week. I don't, I don't know if right now is a possibility, maybe when I retire.
Okay, all right, well, I think we have our answer then, and let's leave it at that, and then if something comes up during the year where, where I feel, or anyone else feels we need one, I'm, we'll revisit and twist arms, which we're not doing tonight.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question, Nanette, if something comes up and you can't chair a meeting, you can always ask someone, whoever's available, to chair in your place?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, for sure. Okay, well, let's move on now to the meeting schedule, which is in your packets. Julie, do you wanna put it up? I don't think Sue had it.
I can put it out.
Sue, you're not gonna see everybody again.
I know.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt this schedule of meetings.
I move that we adopt the schedule of meetings for 2021.
I'd second.
It moved and seconded? Discussion. Are there any dates on there, anybody knows they would have a conflict?
Steve Meyer, I won't be here August 19th.
And maybe we won't either.
Okay.
We, the August meeting is, is generally as needed, and we usually don't need it, but if you're not, we understand, you let us know that you're gonna be someplace wonderful on August 19th. Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so I actually have a report on a couple of items, so you can push that down now Julie.
Okay.
You've gotten very good at that. One thing that I was asked to do was to speak with Gail about the issue that we've been discussing about our role and the limitations of our role. So, Gail and I had a long conversation about this, and she said she was sympathetic, that we're not the only town that is in this feeling, they're in this position. She agrees that the the limitations of the hardship have gotten very, very narrow, and she said that, this was a question that came up, the Planning and Zoning Committee of the Connecticut Bar goes to the legislature every, every session, and tries to talk to them, and to this point, they've not gotten any traction, is what she said. I don't know how hard they're trying, I don't know anything about you know, what's actually gone on, but that's what she told me. She reminded me that we have more than one role, because we also are responsible for hearing appeals of the zoning enforcement, from the zoning enforcement officer decisions, and I told her we'd never had one of those, and she told me we were about to have one, so I will go back to that. She, she said, some towns do make exceptions when they think there will not, where the neighbors have said that they don't have any problems, and where reasons of equity suggest that this is something that might, that, that it would be reasonable to grant, which is, and I, because I had said to her, we looked at some other towns, and we found that they were doing that, and she said, yes, they are, and she said, you know, their lawyers can't tell them what they can and can't do, they can just tell them what the law is, and she said, but I will tell you that if you are challenged, you will lose. So, for further discussion tonight or another time, I think, you know, it's a question of whether we wanna take that risk or not, and she is certainly not telling us that we should take it, she's just telling us why we found, what we found with other, with other towns. She said that we could recommend that they go to zoning, I told her that Margaret always recommends they go to zoning.
I do.
And that that is a good strategy, and that sometimes zoning will either rewrite a zoning reg or grant a special permit. She said that in some towns, the granting of special permits falls to the ZBA, not to zoning, and that if that were to happen in Roxbury, that we would then have the, have the option to grant special permits, which she said the courts are rarely interested in reviewing, unlike denial of a hardship or denial of a variance. So, that's my report from Gail, which I think is helpful, and I would open the floor up for discussion about this in terms of next steps.
I, I don't understand what, that last scenario that you painted Nanette, about if we were to become the body that grants permits, well, how would that happen?
Special, special permits.
Well, who, how would that happen? We've never done that.
Zoning now has the ability to grant, and I frankly, I didn't have time to go back and look at the exact language in the regs, but they can grant special permits, which is essentially an exception. So, she was saying, we could send them to zoning, either to ask for a new zoning reg, or for, to request a special exception of a special permit. What she was saying is that some towns, ZBA, has the option, instead of zoning, the ZBA has the option to grant a special permit, and so they can then, if they can't grant a variance, they can turn to the option of make, of granting a special permit.
But we're not one of those towns, right?
She's saying, if that were the case, in other words, it's one more avenue that we could pursue with zoning.
Oh, oh, I see, if we wanted.
There's never been a special permit granted, is that, at this point in time?
Not through us.
Not through us, but through, has there ever been through zoning a special permit?
Julie's nodding, yes.
Don't even permit special permits all the time.
Can you give me an example of one that they've granted?
Anything that's done down in the commercial zone is always, any of those businesses is granted by a special permit, and special permits always have to have a public hearing attached to them.
Right. I'm sorry, they had to have what attached to them?
A public hearing.
A public hearing. Do you know of any homes, or, which is more of what we say?
No, pretty much all the ones that I know of, since I've been working for the town for three, it's about three years now, it's, it's all businesses in the commercial district.
Is it primarily to do with use, or what issues do they grant the permits for?
It's, actually, we would have to read it, because I know they had revised it for a while, they used to allow certain businesses without it, and then they, they got a little bit more detailed, so. We would have to reread it, we would have to read it, or talk to somebody in zoning.
I think it's primarily a change of use.
Yeah.
In the commercial district. So what would our role be if they moved, if we got that ability? I mean, would that be working with homes, properties, you know, or houses?
Would that be what?
Well, if we were, if we could suddenly grant these, would that be something we would look at when we were, you know, trying to give somebody a variance? For hardship?
Prime to not give them a variance.
Well, because we couldn't give them a variance, because we're not allowed to do it that way? Is this what this is supposed to be a sort of a substitute for? Because we're so tied with what we aren't allowed to do anymore?
I, I don't think zoning would wanna give us this.
I don't think so either.
Authority.
That'd be my next question.
It gives me a headache to think about it, but I think zoning would be very reluctant to give up its authority in these cases.
I concur with that.
Okay. Wouldn't that have to be something that we would have to go and petition zoning, and say, hey, we want that?
Of, of course, but we would have to, before we did that, we wouldn't have to decide that we wanted to do it.
Right.
Or we could simply say.
I mean, I concur with Margaret that the zoning commission is not likely.
So would we then just refer to?
Go ahead Bill.
I would say we would not want anything to do with that.
Okay.
On the Z, I would say that would be, I think that takes the ZBA out, I think that's, that's, that totally makes it a body not, not really functioning the way it should, you know, that this
What?
I have no audio anymore.
No, I don't either.
Julie?
I can hear everybody.
Oh, okay, now I have Julie.
I'm hearing everyone.
Okay, Bill, could you, could you say it again? We kind of lost you.
I don't think, my, my initial reaction would be that we should continue to do what we're doing. I don't think we should be, be involved in special permits, otherwise we're gonna sit there and we're gonna be constantly barraged with special permits, because everybody's gonna realize that we're, that the, the regulations have become so stringent to get these variances approved, and we, like, when I got on, I don't know how many years, 15 years ago, it was a lot different, and we had, we get, we had a much more leeway to grant, grant, grant permits and, and variances, and it's, every year it's getting tougher and tougher, obviously.
Absolutely.
You know, that's, that's why we needed, we had, we had to add on the, the ability to expand the, expand the properties without having to go to zoning by the percentages, you know. So, I think it's just one more way to get around, we're gonna run around coming to the ZBA. around coming to the ZBA and kind of lose our voice.
I think.
Makes a lot of sense, actually.
What does?
What Bill just said.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, I I noticed this when we were reviewing minutes from other towns, that there were a couple of places that had the ability to do that. And they I think I think they did that in lieu of granting a variance. So then I think our other option is if we don't want to do request that that our other option is then to say to an applicant that we can't where we can't grant a variance where there's no hardship, that they go to zoning and 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 discuss one of two things. What is the a petition for that to change a zoning regulation and or to request a special permit?
I think we also can. At times, we can't be so afraid of the law. I don't think it's a small town. I don't. There's so many unique situations on every single one of these properties. There's certain things that we haven't been allowed to let go because of the case law. But I think we can't be so afraid of it either.
Okay.
If as long as we're reasonable, like we we granted things many years ago, they would I wouldn't even think about granting today, you know. So and but I think if it's re it's a reasonable request, I think that's the and we have to look at there's certainly hardships on 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 many properties. And there's reasonable requests, even even some of the when we had a couple, we've had small, small additions where they were encroaching into the hardship we were afraid to grant. And, you know, for example, like the walkway from the garage to the house, that that one of it was about six months ago, right? To me, it was not a wasn't it wasn't something that we had to deny. We it worked out in the end, but it was something that we really could consider as letting letting some of those things go. The, you know, so there's there's some thing, there's still, there's still some leeway. It's still still hard to there's almost never going to be two cases that are so identical, especially in this town with the three acres zoning, larger lot size. So most of the challenges occur when you end up with neighbor issues, like to your point earlier about about why they're trying to grant some of these things, the wraparound of the special permit. You gotta keep I think we have to continue to remember that we're in Roxbury. We're not in where I do my business, Westchester County. For everything, the ZBA meeting is, you know, five, five hours long, right? Because there's so many people concerned about. Anyway.
I well. Can 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 I comment? I I agree with you, Bill, though I when Nanette, you were first speaking about Gail's comments and saying, well, we should know that if we're ever challenged, we would lose, you know. And I just wonder, what does that mean? We lose? What what do we lose? Do we go to jail? Or does some does somebody fined? Or what what's the penalty for losing in that if something is challenged?
It could be the legal fees of the petitioner, the applicant.
I yeah. Do you have any other thoughts about what the penalties might be if we lose? If the town loses?
No, I think just the legal fees.
Town is losing.
Just the legal fees. I mean, not going to be penalized in any way. The only thing I will say, and I have I happen to agree with Bill, because these are very compelling situations. A lot of them are people with neighbors. But, you know, when I was up in the Berkshires and we had some of these issues, you know, it's sort of like once you let the horse out of the barn, then essentially, it's tough, you know, is a walkway? What about a covered walkway? What about a walkway with a bedroom on top of it? You know? It's hard. It's very difficult.
Right.
I
And I guess I guess if I may, the only thing is, you know, if all the neighbors are happy and no one complains about it, it'll all sort of just slide into history. But.
I think that's it, right?
Say on Gail's advice, this is Margaret. She has hinted to us hinted if we wanted to take a risk and we're talking about something, a property that's in the middle of the woods that doesn't have any neighbors anyway, nobody's ever she didn't say do it, but she did imply that if we were assessing risk, you know, she she isn't unreasonable. But she is, and I have to say, I meet a lot of land use attorneys. She is one of the best in Connecticut. And if she says, if you were challenged, you'll lose. And I'm assuming that that, you know, because we extended beyond a hardship, she's very probably right. And I guess that's why I've been saying, well, maybe the law should be different or zoning should do something. She's an she's an exceptionally good lawyer, and she's actually one of the few land use lawyers that likes to work with small towns. Many don't want to be bothered, particularly because they also bring cases in front of zoning. So they, you know, they don't want they don't want to offend anyone. But Gail is really has an excellent reputation for detail and expertise.
I totally agree with that. And her all of her, everything she gives us is very helpful. The only thing with it is that at times it can also help to dissuade us before we've really heard the case, too. We have to be careful about that.
Yeah.
We're all put on a board. We're not being paid. We want to make our town better. And we have to remember that. And so we have to be careful not to 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 deny everything, but to 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 Steve's point, in which we we don't want to let the the horse out of the barn, we which was our big, our biggest thing is we want, we don't have something down the road to be able to follow or or follow these cases around so that we can get more and more expansion. But once again, because the properties are so different and so unique, it's not like they were, you know, we're lower westchester, we have house, house, house are the same. There's so many unique situations that we're we're up against that that's a little bit harder for them to do with us. So I think we have to use our common sense. We're that's what we're charged with, I believe.
I'm going to I'm going to have to recuse myself because I have a deck that ZBA wouldn't let me enclose had.
That was before any of our time, wasn't it?
Yeah. And zoning, they actually miscounted. I could have had that as space, but zoning miscounted, I believe. But when I went to the ZBA and said, you know, we were building on top of what had been a barn that was a garage with a flat roof and it was breaking down, they wouldn't let us build on the hull top of the roof. We had to leave some of it outside. And I went to the ZBA and said, can I fill in this little bit? No. I was shocked. In those days, I like, like in tears, I know that you do nice things for my neighbors. Why are you turning me down? Is it just because I'm from New York? But anyway, if we change our position on walling in walkways and open weird open spaces, I'll be I'll be here. I'll recuse myself and then come here.
Especially a special permit just for that month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Did you want to say something?
No, I'm just listening.
Okay, Nancy and Sue, any comments?
No, I think.
You have to.
I pretty much agree with with Bill.
I think we're all.
I think we sort of all.
So.
Margaret, I am sorry about your little piece of.
Well, you know, in the summer, you can come and sit out and have a martini with me. But most of the year, it's not very usable.
So what I would say is, there's not a decision to be made here. We've had the discussion. We know how people, what people's feelings about this are. And we can proceed accordingly when we have applications in the future. I think I think this is really healthy. I think it's will help to move us forward. I'm just remembering when the materials that we circulated, there was a statement similar to what we've been talking about, which is that most land use lawyers will tell you that there is a wide difference between the law and the practice, particularly in small towns. So I think we're set on this unless anybody else has anything to add. Okay, I think we came to a really good place. So oh, I missed it. So Julie, you just sent me a text or a chat. Okay, a text?
Yeah, it was a text. Don't forget to do your meeting minutes. They still need approval.
We didn't do that?
Skipped right over it or or I walked away, which.
We did vote on the meeting schedule.
We didn't.
The meeting minutes from October.
I apologize. As soon as this is. Thank you, Julie. And as soon as this is over, we this discussion is over, we will go back before we adjourn. So just to let you know what's coming down the road, Julie has had discussions with a potential applicant that who has been who the zoning enforcement officer has sent to us. And so it's, I don't want to say likely, but it's quite it's 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 there's a possibility that we're going to have that application. And so I don't know too much about this. So I'm just gonna, you know, give you a heads up. you all saw that the the applicants at Chalobes went ahead and were halfway through or three quarters of the way through building the dormer that we had denied. John issued a notice of violation and the zoning board supported him in in the notice of violation. There is no building permit because he couldn't get a building permit without a zoning permit. And he didn't have a zoning permit because we had said no. So so there is a notice of violation. Appeals from the notice of violation by the zoning enforcement officer come to the ZBA. I know it sounds circular, but Gail thinks that it's that it's possible, or perhaps even likely, that there will be an appeal from the from the decision of the zoning enforcement officer. They have 15 days from the decision. And so that would come to us. And what she explained to me was that because I I I'm I said to her, you know, this is a decision we made. And she said, no, what we the only thing we would be considering is the decision of the zoning enforcement officer in granting in issuing in in issuing a notice of violation. We would not be revisiting our decision. So just that so that's it's possible that that will also come up next month. So she was reminding me that we do have another an additional role beyond granting of variances.
I think I think, Nanette, this is Margaret. I think if someone wants to appeal a zoning enforcement officer's ruling or zoning ruling, that they they're supposed to go to the ZBA, you know. I think in the past, people sometimes went straight to court. But I think now they are required to exhaust their local remedies, which means they come to us. I don't know if Gail went into this, but that's my memory of a case over in Washington where they didn't do the right sequence. So.
First has to go back to the CEO for
Yeah.
is that I don't quite understand. And yes, Gail said exactly what you said, Margaret. The option would be for them to go straight to court. But she thinks it's better, this the this route is better, that as long as it can stay within the purview of the town and the town sensibilities can be brought to bear, the better it is. So next month, we might have the application and the appeal from the zoning of the decision of the zoning enforcement officer.
In an appeal?
What?
What is our role in the appeal?
Our role is to is to either uphold the decision of the zoning enforcement officer or I Steve, maybe you can help here. I don't know exactly how to how to say say it.
I I it's a I think it's essentially to for us to review his decision.
Yeah.
In the particular case you're talking about, I mean, it's sort of, they didn't have a building permit. They didn't have a right to do it. So I don't know what their argument could be, but creativity is always sort of a possibility.
the zoning commission told them that they had to take it down.
Yeah.
And so I think that essentially, they will be appealing that decision about whether or not they have to take it down. And so that will be if it comes to us, that's what we would be considering.
That'll be a mess.
It's a self-created mess.
Yeah.
But they blatantly disregarded.
What?
They blatantly disregarded the whole outcome of the meetings that we had with them.
I think we should not discuss the substance of this any further.
I guess my question is, because this is all due to me doing something like that. So our role is to simply look at whatever John said and decide and and decide whether or not that's valid.
So I'm gonna I'm gonna say I think we should. I just wanted to apprise you of this possibility. I think when the if this comes to us, and each side will have, John will argue his side, and there will be and Gail will represent the town. And there will be an attorney for the the.
The applicant.
The applicant for the and I'm sure they will fully explain to us what what the decision is that's before us. But I don't want to go too far down this road. I just wanted to let you know that it's potentially coming to us. Okay?
Okay.
Something to look forward to.
Yeah, exactly. I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes from the meeting of October 15, 2020.
I move to adopt the excellent minutes prepared by Julie.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm just looking to make sure we've covered everything. And I think we have. So we're on to other business. Does anyone have other business? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. I'm not sure it requires a vote, but just in case, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
See you, everybody.
Thank you. See you next. See you. See you next month, I guess, again by Zoom.
Yeah, probably.
Be by Zoom.
Stay safe.
Yeah, you too.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.